Welcome to the Planning Board Agenda, January 13th, 2020, which is our reorganization meeting. First, let me just read adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided by a notice published in the Home News Tribune on December 28th, 2019 and posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5th, 2020. If you can please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first on the agenda would be a motion for chairperson.
Madam Secretary, I'd like to make a motion for Sherri Ruggieri.
Yes, I'll make a second.
Okay, let me just do the roll first, okay. Ms. Ruggieri?
Present.
Mr. Pipola?
Here.
Mr. Corret?
Present.
Mr. Soltes?
Here.
Mr. Peasy?
Here.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Yes, here.
Mr. Danielle is not here, Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Okay, now, the first motion, could you repeat that, Mr. Peasy?
I'd like to have a motion to nominate Sherri Ruggieri as chairperson.
I'll make a second.
Who did second? JP? Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Congratulations, Chairwoman.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate this opportunity and hopefully 2020 is going to be the best year for our board. I really consider us our board family and so I'm really proud of, I think, our accomplishments for the past year and looking forward to an exciting new year. So, thank you again.
Congratulations.
You earned it, Sherri.
Okay, now, I just do have to do a motion for the vice chair.
Madam Secretary, I'd like to nominate Dennis Pipola as vice chair. He's handled that position before and hopefully he can get it right. I'm only kidding. But he does an excellent job.
Okay, Ms. Ruggieri?
Absolutely, yes. Dennis is my right hand even though he's on the left hand.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Pipola.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you. It's a pleasure working with you and so I'll do my darndest to do a better job.
To improve in 2020.
Okay, so now I see, I'll just, yeah.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, on to our agenda, we're now nominating our board secretary, although she really, it should be administrative assistant because she did complete all the coursework for her certification, Lillian, for administrative assistant.
I'll make a motion for Lillian Trailers to be our board secretary.
Second.
Ms. Ruggieri?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Pipola?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Corret?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Absolutely, baby.
Can I think about that? Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Okay, but I'm due to retire in one year, in three months.
We heard that. Everybody said that.
Please come up with some extra candy this year.
Better kinds, right?
Don't worry, I'm going shopping, Will.
Okay, on to our professionals.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bignell Planning as our planner for the year.
Second.
Okay, Lillian?
Ms. Ruggieri?
Yes, and I'm so glad that Mr. Bignell is our planner and his work with redevelopment and rehabilitation has been wonderful, so thank you.
Mr. Pipola?
Absolutely.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Okay, now, we're on to our engineer.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion of making Delaware Rattan Engineering, specifically Charlie Carley, our board engineer for the year.
Second.
Ms. Ruggieri? Excuse me, Ms. Ruggieri?
I turned to Mr.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
This is approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. And our next one is for our attorney, for the planning board attorney.
I'll make a motion to make Mike Rubin our board attorney for the year. He's been doing a great job, great when he came on board with us in the past and hope he stays with us for many more years to come.
Madam Secretary, I'd like to second that motion and just concur with what you've said. He's been a great help to me, sitting right next to him, and he's been a rock. And second the motion.
Ms. Ruggieri?
Yes.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now on to appointments of-
Before we go any further, what I'm going to do is, and we should have done before we danced, we need to swear in the, and then what we're going to ask you to do is just affirm your prior vote after you're sworn in. So, remember before the new appointments-
Okay, Mr. Corret? Who else? Mr. Pipola?
Mr. Sandelsky?
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Oh, Mark is not here, okay, so there's only three.
Why were you standing up for Mark?
Share.
I'm going to start this off with I and then you can say your final word. One moment, one moment, one moment. You don't get a word. I tried. I, you solemnly swear in firm, that I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey-
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear, that I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same-
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And in this state-
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly-
And justly.
Perform all duties-
Perform all duties.
As a class four member-
As a class four member.
Of the planning board-
Of the planning board.
Of the township of Edison-
The township of Edison.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now, you all affirm the votes you just took previously, now that you are now sworn members of the board?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, appointment of committees. I know that we have our technical review committee. We had, Mr. Soltes was our representative at the technical review TRC committee.
Do we vote on it? Do we make a motion?
They're at the discretion of the chair. She creates the committees.
So, I hereby appoint Mr. John Soltes to the technical review committee.
Thank you, madam.
Excellent. Excellent choice.
Oh, there need to be two?
However, may, up to three, yeah.
Up to three, okay. So, I'd like to appoint Mr. Sandelsky to the technical review committee.
Thank you, Sherri. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chairwoman.
How many years did we serve on the technical review? A lot of years before, so we're looking forward to your expertise.
Thank you.
And then, the last one, Mr. Pipola?
Thank you very much.
So, we'll have a full house, a technical review committee. Now on to adoption of planning board rules.
They're the same every year.
I know, I want to get a copy.
I've been asked to amend them and it's one of the things that's through the cracks, I'll take care of it this year.
Okay, because I've been asked for other boards, they wanted to look at our planning board rules, so.
I will do it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, acceptance of minutes, there are none.
And we'll take care of that this year, too.
You said that last year.
Okay, on to-
In the DVD.
What is it? It's called Dragon Speak, where you put it in and it types it up for you?
I know, we tried that. Way too expensive.
Okay. All right, on to resolutions. P-24-2019, Hilltop Associates, Dayton Drive.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve P-24-2019, Hilltop Associates.
Second the motion.
Ms. Ruggieri?
Lillian, yes?
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Abstain.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, the next resolution amended P-6-2016, Lincoln Property Management, 1918 Route 27.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve amended P-6-2016, Lincoln Property Management.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Ms. Ruggieri?
Yes, to approve?
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Abstain.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, old business, none, on to new business. P-5216, Yukesh Mahajan, 815 Wood Avenue, Block- Oh, that's, this application was withdrawn. Okay.
It just, Sherri?
Yes.
You might want to just tell people in the audience if they're here for that, that it's not going to be heard.
Right, it's, when you look at the agenda, it's at the bottom, it says this application was withdrawn, so if there's anyone that wanted to speak as to this, it's not going to be heard tonight.
Why don't you state the address?
I'm sorry?
State the address.
Right, oh, okay. 815 Wood Avenue, Block 500, Lot 10.
I already have asked them, they're not, they're just here to listen.
Oh.
Okay.
To get knowledgeable about the boards and, yeah, so visiting.
Okay, very good. So, on the agenda, we're on to page two, the second application, P-26-2019, Metex MFG Corporation, 206 Talmadge Road, Block 22 dot A, Lot 1C dot 4.
Madam Chair, unfortunately, I'm going to have to recuse myself. I worked for Metex many years, a wonderful organization.
I see the applicant is coming forward.
Before we begin, we're going to swear in our two professionals and we're going to swear you in for the entire calendar year. Madam Chair, if we could just, at the beginning of each application, put on the record that they've been sworn in at the reorganization meeting, so therefore it'll be on the record that they are sworn in, and we'll do Mr. Carley when he returns, I guess, next month.
Okay.
And we're going to do you together. Do you solemnly swear in firm the testimony you're going to give during this calendar year, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Patrick McNamara from the law firm Escrenci Hollenbeck on behalf of the applicant. We're here this evening seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to help modernize and improve this existing warehouse, which is currently vacant on 206 Talmadge Road. I have Mr. Scott Turner here as our principal witness, and I'd like to have him sworn in qualified at this time, please.
Patrick, you can sit there if you prefer.
Oh, okay.
Whatever you're comfortable.
Thank you.
Good to see you again, by the way.
Same here.
Do you solemnly swear in firm the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Scott Turner, T-U-R-N-E-R, Menlo Engineering Associates. 261 Cleveland Avenue in Highland Park.
Mr. Turner, just for the benefit of the board and public, could you please provide us with the benefit of your background, education, and credentials as an engineer?
Sure, I hold a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I am a principal engineer with Menlo Engineering Associates. I've been with them for nearly 33 years now. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I provided professional testimony as a, as a professional engineer in many, many planning board and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including many times in front of this board.
And we will accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Turner, if you could please provide the board and the public with an overview of the proposed improvements to this warehouse facility.
Sure, I put an exhibit on the easel, I'll mark this as A1.
Yes.
And this was, this is an exhibit of the site plan that's been rendered with the landscaping superimposed on top of that, along with a Google aerial image from 2018. It's 206 Talmadge Road, overall plan exhibit, and it has a date of January 13th, 2020. North is, for all intents and purposes, straight up on the exhibit. The property is known as 206 Talmadge Road, it's Block 22 dash A, Lot 1C 4, and it holds 3.47 acres. It is located almost on the southwest corner of Talmadge Road and Brunswick Avenue. It's not quite at the corner, but it sort of hits that angular signalized intersection, Brunswick and Talmadge Road. It is an existing developed piece of property. The existing warehouse building itself is 54,036 square feet in total area. Approximately 47,604 square feet of that is warehouse space and 6,432 square feet is office space. It is serviced by an existing driveway that's paved off of Talmadge Road on the north property limits, along the northerly property limits, that brings you in and out of the site and allows access to the rear of the property, which is where really all the services would take place. Along the northerly side of that building, there are three existing loading dock areas that currently don't really function very well. There's not a lot of room on that side of the building to allow some maneuverability with trucks and that sort of thing, which is one of the main reasons why we're here. We're looking to eliminate those truck docks that are on that side of the building and basically fill in the hole and reservice the building that make it more current with today's standards and demands of the warehousing needs by adding five new truck docks along the back of the building, which would be the, the westerly side of the building, along with a drive-in ramp which would gain access into the building. In addition to that, we are going to provide 22 parking stalls along the northerly side of the building, where we're filling in that existing truck loading area, and then we're going to provide 15 new parking spaces along the southwest or southeast corner, actually, I'm sorry, it's the southwest corner of the building in the rear, along with a new refuse and recycling container area. The site itself is surrounded on all three sides by existing commercial and warehousing and office space currently. There doesn't appear to be any residential uses anywhere nearby, it's, it's an existing developed piece of property that's vacant right now. The goal here is to repurpose the building and just basically let it be used to current standards for warehousing, which is what it was built for originally. The existing driveways and pavements that are there now will be maintained in terms of, we're not expanding any of those areas, we're not expanding the building itself, it's a one-story brick building to maintain and remain. We are going to provide some curbing along the interiors of the roadways, along with, you know, the retaining structures that are needed to accommodate the new truck dock areas in the rear, and all of the asphalt that's there will be either removed and replaced with full-depth reconstruction as necessary or milled and overlay. So, at the end of the job, the whole entire paved area will have a brand-new, fresh, wearing surface of asphalt, and there'll be concrete pads, of course, where the truck docks are. In addition to that, we do have some frontage, green space frontage along Talmadge Road, which will, of course, remain. There's an existing small sign, it looks like it's about four by eight, the sign that's there currently, that's sort of located on the northeasterly corner of the building there now. That's going to remain. We're just going to add some landscaping around that, we're providing some street trees along Talmadge Road and some additional shrub plantings along the front and in the islands that we're creating in the northwest corner of the building itself. We're actually reducing the impervious coverage on the site from, we're going from 79% impervious coverage to 75% impervious coverage, so we're adding some green space onto the development. We're not looking to do anything really along the perimeter of the property, there's currently drainage ditches, there's actually a drainage easement existing on the westerly property line that's on the other property, but that allows for all the drainage that's currently on this property to shed off the property and then drain into those existing ditches, which will remain in their existing condition. There are some wetland areas, some regulated features on the property, but all the work that we're anticipating here, we believe, are permitted under the permit by rule regulations from the NJDEP. We're not considered a major development by NJDEP standards, we're not increasing the impervious coverage by a quarter acre or more, we're actually decreasing it, and we're not disturbing more than one acre of disturbance on the property, we're actually significantly less than that. And the site's in the LI Zone data, it's Zone District, it's a light industrial district, it's a permitted use, we comply with all of the municipal zoning standards, including the parking standards for this particular use. We really have one particular waiver, I believe, which was pointed out by Mr. Bignell, which is, I believe it's a waiver, it's a 15-foot landscape area along all property lines, and because of the existing condition of the property and the fact that there are existing drainage ditches and the pavement just, you know, encroaches within that 15-foot buffer area, we have approximately seven feet of buffer space along the northerly property line and approximately 10 feet of buffer space along the westerly property limits, but beyond the property limits, there's another 15 to 30 feet, depending on where you're looking, immediately adjacent to our property on our neighbor's site that's wooded, and we're not going to obviously disturb any of that. We have, are there any questions about the testimony?
Excuse me, Scott, what are you asking for a waiver on?
It's, it's a 15-foot buffer that's required along all property limits, it was, it was noted by Mr. Bignell in his report, so I wanted to bring it up to make sure you are aware of it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
We've always treated them as variances in the past, not a, not a waiver.
I apologize.
Madam Chair, under, under item G, it's under item G.
Yeah, we have January 8th, 2020, report from Mr. Bignell.
Got it, thank you.
And it's under 6G. So, in, in terms of an engineer, from an engineering perspective, you know, I don't see any substantial detriment with that particular variance in terms of being considered. Once again, it is an existing condition, we're not looking to make the condition any worse, we're just making it, or maintaining what's there currently now, we don't want to really do anything within that area, it is within a buffer area for the, for the wetlands that are there, so we, we suggest that we, we maintain what we have. So, anything in Mr. Bignell's report here, we, other than what we just discussed, we will agree to comply with, and then we have a letter from DNR Engineering dated November 4th, 2019, and we will agree to comply with all of his requirements as well. The one item that he did point out was sidewalk along the frontage. We did take a look, there are schools, there's an elementary school and a high school within two miles of the property. The site currently along Talmadge Road, there is an existing ADA ramp and a little piece of sidewalk on either side of that driveway, so what we'll agree to do is we'll provide a four-foot wide sidewalk with a pass-by as needed per ADA standards along the Talmadge Road frontage.
Yes, Mr. Pipola?
Scott, also, Mr. Bignell mentioned about the refuge storage or the box to move it out of the wetlands, I don't, you haven't mentioned that.
Sure, yes, we are going to relocate that, that's currently within an existing paved area, but it's within what would be a buffer area for the DEP, we'll move that out of there. It is still going to be located in the rear of the building, though, back there.
Also, Scott, I was out there today and your people were working on that area where the three overhead doors are, you're eliminating the three overhead doors on the north end.
Okay.
Now, that area, and you noted on your, on your drawing of existing conditions on Sheet 2, you call it the sump, sump manhole area. They were out there and you're showing a sidewalk moving all along that north edge of the building.
Correct.
That sump area there, there's about an eight-foot elevation change from the sidewalks on either side of that, and they're just laying that sidewalk on the bottom of that eight-foot change.
No.
Eight-foot drop.
No, no, what we've done is we've regraded that whole area to fill that space up, so it will be at grade for where the rest of the parking lot is. So, when you're walking along the sidewalk, along the building with that row of parking, it will all be at the same elevation.
It will be at the same level.
We're not, we're not-
So, that concrete pad, there's a pad they're pouring there, that they-
Honestly, I'm not-
There is, there is one there currently, what my client did was repair the existing area where those loading docks are, it's badly damaged. They thought they had a tenant lined up for a short-term stay that we need to use the docks, and I worked with them, unfortunately, that deal fell through, but in the event, my client can get a short-stay tenant of three to six months whilst making all these other renovations, it would at least allow for the use of those loading docks if you could get somebody in on a short-term stay, and we obviously have to be someone that's a warehouse type of use that's permitted in the LI Zone.
But the, the application and ultimately, that will be filled in, it will all, the sidewalk will be placed there, all at grade levels, at-
Correct, yes, per my site plans, yes, correct. And I forgot to mention, and I'm sorry, the lighting that's on the property, I think it's important to mention, we are replacing all of the lighting on site with new LED lighting fixtures.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bignell, that wasn't on the original plan, was it? The LED lighting?
Yeah, there's a, if you were to look at Sheet 6, lighting plan.
Through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sandelsky, I looked at the foot candles, I didn't realize, I didn't look at the LED.
Because I was looking at your report.
Yeah, as long as it meets the foot candle, he can have-
And you said all existing.
Yeah, he can have, he can have whatever he wants, really, if he wants to upgrade the LED, that's fine.
Right.
All right.
Yes, and I believe in Mr. Carley's report, he had mentioned that it, he reviewed it and that it did comply with standards, township standards.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
I have a question. I know the applicant has agreed to our report, but in our report, we asked for the tree replacement. replacement. If you look at the site plan for the tree plantage, it shows like new plantings, but there's, there's existing trees along the front of that building. Are you going to cut all those trees down, or what's going on with that?
Those trees were taken down already by the, by the owner of the property. Unfortunately, without a permit, they were fined, they paid the violation. We're replacing those trees that were there. Frankly, those trees were too close to that building anyway.
Absolutely, but my, I guess my concern is, the replacement portion, does it meet what would be required if you're cutting them down with permission?
We're going to make, we'll make sure that they do.
That's what I'm looking for on my, for my review on the plan, so you need to show that in more detail.
Right, and we'll make, we'll work with you on that.
Okay, so that would solve that, that issue.
So that would be a condition of approval, that they submit a tree, a tree replacement plan to you?
Well, it's in our reports, if he agrees with our report, it's part of our report, but yes, that's, that would be more refined.
One is commission council, we have that.
Yeah, I mean, the report just simply says, no, nothing provided.
But if you go into my comments, it said that they have to comply with the tree replacement plan and provide a complete landscape plan, so I'm looking for a lot more detail. And if they've cut those trees down already, they're, and they've paid the penalty, penalties, that's fine, but there's a, there's a number of trees per tree that has to get, you know, replaced for that, whether it be percentage or a number of trees, if it's more than 18 inches.
And if they don't comply, you have a note in here that they will be, they will have to make a contribution to the tree fund. Do we know whether they're going to-
We don't know that, because there's a big green space in front of the building that can certainly plant in. So I'm looking for like a, like a hedge or landscaping around the, around the foundation and then replacement trees on the site. But I know there's, there's pipes and there's wells, there's all kinds of things in there, so I'm not sure you can plant everywhere.
There is, there are some monitoring wells there that we have to be careful of, but I am confident that I think what, based on what we're planting already, our plan calls for 41 deciduous and evergreen trees currently and 10 shrub plants around that existing sign. I know we can't take credit for the shrubs, but we will add the necessary landscape material to comply with the tree replacement. If there's, for some reason, we can't get them all on property, we'll, the applicant will contribute to the fund.
And I'm looking for the calculations on the plan, so that we're all in the same place.
And we agree to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, so the, that count that you just gave us didn't include the ones you removed?
No, that was just the total of what we're providing currently, yes.
And then you have to add-
We're going to add in the ones that were removed, we're going to take that into account when we do the tree replacement calculation, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have a question for Mr. Bignell. We have certain trees that we like to be planted, you know, can we make it subject to your review for, if Mark Danielle was here tonight?
Yeah, there's not going to be any arviviti, and there's not going to be any white pines.
Okay.
So blue spruce and deciduous trees and more street tree species will be in order.
We want stuff that's going to survive in that area.
Yes, yes.
We've worked with Mr. Bignell's office many times, and we'll, we'll supply him with a plan that he can review.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, also, is there an existing sprinkler system on the property?
There, I'm being told, yes, there is.
Okay, because you can plant all these nice landscape plants and they're not going to live if you don't have the water for it.
The landscape irrigation system will be upgraded accordingly.
Thank you.
The goal is to make this an attractive property, so that he can get a tenant, you know, long-term tenant here.
Madam Chair, is there anything being done to the exterior of the building, painting or cleaning or anything of that nature?
Currently, no, and the reason being is that they don't have any specific tenant requirements at the moment, so they would respectfully like to hold that until we get some information on tenant requirements. And at that point in time, if there's any facade improvements necessary, that's one that will be made. Right now, the existing building, the front, is a brick facade, it's sort of a natural tan color, and the sides and the rear are cinder block material gray, very typical of a warehouse-type structure like this. But it is painted gray, the front is painted that natural tan color. The proposal right now is to not do any facade improvements.
I think it would be at least-
We would consent to a resolution condition that once we have tenants lined up and come back in, we could show you professionals what they would be intending to do in terms of facade improvements, signage, and how the entire front area would get dressed up.
That would be great, because as I see it, that area and what you're planning is just fantastic. I mean, that area needs to be cleaned up, and the plans you're putting here are just, I think, just add to the visibility there, it's, that's beautiful, because that area is really beaten down out there now. That'd be great. And I'm sure, and you're concerned about the outside area would compare, because I don't think you'd want some eyesore on the building when you've got such a beautiful landscape and all the other changes.
We want to make sure the tenant finds it usable, whether it's for signage, certain types of color schemes that are part of their brand identification. You know, I think there's a Sherwin-Williams not far away, if you notice their facade, it matches their color scheme, it matches their brand. If we have a tenant hopefully of that nature, we want to be able to do the same thing for them.
That's great, and I would only suggest, and if our board members agree, it wouldn't be necessary for you to come back to the board, I mean, just bounce it off.
Oh, we would just do it through your professionals.
Perfect.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bignell.
While we're looking at my report, there's a few other things that I know the applicant has agreed to, but I'd like to get them stated on the record. One would be that there's no outside storage of any kind of materials at all?
No objection.
Pallets, nothing?
We agree to that.
Okay. And that there'd be no vehicles being parked on the site that are not associated with the, with the operation of the building? So we can't store cars or anything else on the property? If, if there's an open space, we can't store new vehicles on the property?
No objection. We consent. We agree to that as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Turner, do you have anything else to add with regard to the reports?
I do not, no, no. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Madam Chair, one? Madam Chair, I have a few questions. I know he's testified that he would address the comments in Mr. Carley's report, I just wanted to just clarify or look for some additional information. I know you testified that there'd be sidewalk provided in front of the property, four-foot wide with the five-foot bypass turnaround areas, but is there sufficient right-of-way available in between the roadway and the property line?
No, it would mean, in all likelihood, it would have to be within an easement, a right-of-way easement, or a sidewalk easement we'd provide.
Okay, so that easement would become a condition of any board action?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Also, I just wanted to clarify and make sure, since you have an unusual drainage configuration with pumps collecting the drainage for the trench drains along those loading docks, and Mr. Carley was looking for some level of a commitment from you guys for backup power should those pumps lose electricity?
Yeah, we haven't discussed that yet with our client, frankly. We will take that under consideration, and I'll provide any information that I can with Mr. Carley. If that becomes an absolute requirement, we'll have to address it. Typically, when we have something like this, where we're dealing with just loading docks, outdoor loading spaces like this, we don't use it, we don't have backup power, we may do dual pumps or something like that, where one pump fails, the other one would kick on, something of that sort. But I, we will agree to work with Mr. Carley's office and provide him whatever he's comfortable with. Whether that's an outdoor, another power supply, I just, frankly, I'm not sure yet. We'll work with Mr. Carley.
Okay, so that's something that you're, that's a condition you're agreeing to. Also, Mr. Carley looks for a little more information on, it looks like the, the site was identified on the GEO website as having some environmental monitoring system, could you speak to that?
I don't know what they're specifically for, but the surveyors did locate the monitoring wells that are on the property. There are a number of them particularly focused within the, the open green area along the front. They are going to be maintained, we're not looking to touch them, we'll work around them, we're not, anything that we're doing on the property will not have an impact on those monitoring walls. What they're for specifically, I don't know, I'm not privy to that.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, if you do, if there's any ongoing-
I don't know, we can, we could-
There's no, I believe all wells have been built.
Yeah, wait a second.
It's ours, the groundwater monitoring wells have been built in place, so we'll confirm that and get that information to you professionals.
Okay, thank you. And then you also agreed to, I believe I heard you agreed to provide a freshwater wetlands LOI?
We will provide an LOI, we have to go to the DEP to verify the LOI, but I don't believe there's any other permits required for the project. We're going to do the permits under permit by rule.
Okay. That's all, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Does that conclude your-
I would just like briefly call one more witness, Mr. Oscealo, our planner since the original C variance now is being requested by way of the tenants in the application.
Because usually I don't open the public portion until after you've had all your experts speak, so.
He's my only other witness, Madam Chair.
Do you solemn swear a firm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Sure, it's Justin Oscealo, A-U-C-I-E-L-L-O, the Capone Consulting Group, 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank.
Mr. Oscealo, for the benefit of the board and public, please provide us with your credentials, experience, and licenses as a planner.
Yes, absolutely. So I'm licensed, planning in the state of New Jersey since 2007, I have a master's in city regional planning from Rutgers University in 2005. I've appeared in Edison on multiple occasions, I've also appeared in 18 counties, in hundreds of planning and zoning boards. My planning practice consists of everything from redevelopment to master planning to variance work for applications that range from, from, you know, homeowners to multinational corporations.
Have you ever testified before this board?
Yes, I have.
Okay, we'll accept you as an expert in your field, because you're licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Oscealo, you're familiar with Mr. Bignell's report and the reason to amend the application to allow for the additional single-bulk variance with regard to the 15-foot buffer requirement? If you could please address that, and I believe primarily be more a C2 than a C1-type variance?
Sure, so this is a C2 variance, this is a flexible C criteria, the standard for that is whether the benefits do outweigh the detriments. You just heard the testimony of Mr. Turner, who talked about the various upgrades to the site from the current condition. There is the existing buffer on two portions of the property, unfortunately, there's really no way to comply with that, but I still think, with that said, we do advance the criteria of the MLUL, including the provision of light air and open space, sufficient space for this development, and the desirable visual environment, which you've heard, there's going to be upgrades to this property, some additional landscaping, there's also a reduction of the impervious coverage as well. So I think the benefits certainly do outweigh the detriments for this variance with respect to the negative criteria, certainly does not rise to a substantial detriment to the public good, there really is no detriment in this case. You heard Mr. Turner, he talks about, he talked about the surroundings being, being mostly commercial industrial office, there's no residential, and there's no impact, of course, on the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. This is, this is zoned for this use under LI, this is a use that certainly fits within the character of the area. So on balance, the benefits certainly do outweigh the, the detriments of this application.
And given the amount of landscaping that's already present between this property, what will be added to it as an enhancement with the landscape plan and the natural buffers for the other three properties, the north, south, and I guess west side, that further justifies the nature of the variance relief, given that it's an enhancement to the buffering, which is part of the overall intent and purpose of that type of ordinance.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, I have no further questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, anyone?
Just a quick question.
Mr. Reader.
Thank you, just, probably just curiosity, do you have any idea what type of tenant or business would take?
If I could briefly call Mr. Weinbaum from my client to answer the question?
Do you solemn swear a firm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Michael J. Weinbaum.
Say your last name.
Thank you, Mr. Weinbaum, if you could please respond to the question asked by the commissioner with regard to the type of tenant you're looking for?
Pretty much warehouses that we've been looking for. I've had quite a few people who've come to look at the building, and they've all been warehousing, but they've all kind of left because of my dock door situation. Right now, I have a wholesale supply house who would like to go in there, and I have another company who wanted to store black pepper. Those are the two I'm dealing with right now. But I think once I'll know, once I have approval for the doors, I think a lot more will come and, and show more interest in wanting to get in there. But right now, it's just the door issues really stopping, stopping our progress.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bignell.
Now that he's mentioned black pepper, is there any odors that are going to be coming off the property, or that's a problem site?
I really didn't explore the black pepper guy, it was a gentleman who just wanted to store black pepper, I don't even know about odors of black pepper.
Well, I, I have a concern with that only because of the odors will affect the neighborhood, and that becomes a real hassle in town, so we should, I don't know how we approach that, but we need to flush that out a little bit.
We'll, we'll make sure to keep that as a concern as we look to potentially negotiate letters of intent with other prospective tenants, that there would be a concern of satisfying any ambient air quality standards that the DEP has, as well as anything else that would be considered noxious or offensive in nature.
If you guys are satisfied with that, that's up to you.
I think a statement, excuse me, Madam Chair, I think a statement by the ownership there and swearing to that, I think is adequate for myself, as long as they pay attention to get some document to make sure there's nothing of that nature.
Understood, sir.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure, Mr. Bignell, you are correct, we've had some issues in other areas of the town where smells and odors have been an issue, we don't want to have that issue again, you know, so there's, there's ways that you can handle those type of odors if you do have them, but those, that equipment, that air cleansing equipment has to be put in place, otherwise, we don't, we're not going to have odors come all over town.
Understood, I represent trade associations and a number of companies in the flavor and fragrance ingredient industry, and I've seen the lengths they've gone to to outfit warehouse facilities and clean rooms with ventilation controls and scrubbers and the like to address the issue. We're probably not likely to have that particular type tenant here, but if we do, we certainly know how to address it.
And you're going to have a single tenant in this building? One tenant?
Yeah, one tenant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think at this point then, I would open the public portion. If anyone from the public is present that wants to speak as to this application, please come forward, your name and address for the court reporter.
Hello, Kenneth Nelson, Nine Dobson Road. I've been Edison resident my whole life, I think it's a great idea that you guys have something. As someone who's grown up in this town, I've seen this property been abandoned for, you know, years now at this point.
We need to swear a minute.
And then, were you able to get his name?
I have to swear, you win.
Sure thing.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Kenneth Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N, Nine Dobson Road, Edison.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, like I said, I just thought this is a good idea, I think this is a great idea. This property's been abandoned for years now. My main thing that at least sparked my interest was sidewalks. I know as dealing with the Board of Ed and some of the Board of Ed problems we've had, we've been listening to feedback from students. We have like bus stops along Talmadge Road. The main, my main thing is that a lot of our students right now are basically either work, walking in the mud or the grass, or walking basically along the curb in the street where, you know, they're high school students, middle school students, whatever. Their general safety might be an issue. I think it shouldn't be required per se, considering the fact that most of the properties along Talmadge don't have sidewalks, but I think that putting sidewalks in, at least for this property, would be a good initiative to try to, you know, spur other businesses along Talmadge to put sidewalks in for, you know, students, local pedestrians, because I know, at least at the moment, Talmadge is more of a, you know, fright road and transport road rather than something for citizens, where if you don't have a car or a bike, it's pretty hard to get between one side of the train tracks to the other, or Route 1 to 27 and et cetera. So I just think this is a good idea, likewise, so, thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Make a motion to close the public meeting?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Mr. Bignell, the reference to sidewalks, where do we stand on that, or what is issue, or what is the requirements?
Well, he's agreed to put them in, I believe.
Along that front?
And he's going to provide an easement on the property, it does, there's not enough room between the right-of-way and the road.
I'm sorry, I missed that, thank you very much. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant preliminary and final approval for this application, including the requested variance for the 15-foot landscape area along all property lines, with the following conditions. First, adherence and acceptance, I believe, as the testimony has been provided, and also the comments and interaction, adherence and acceptance to all the recommendations and comments made by our consultants as outlined in Mr. Bignell's latest memo of January 8th and Mr. Carley's memo of November 4th. And finally, adding the proviso that no changes can be made to these conditions of approval without returning to this board to seek our approval for any such changes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Also, to add in there regarding the landscaping that was removed, that, that will be added in there too, because they did say that they would, they would do that, to replace it in the irrigation upgrade.
I believe they said the, they testified that they will, they have irrigation or replace the irrigation. the irrigation.
We had it, but it's, it's a new irrigation system in the building.
And the vehicles, storage vehicles and outside storage, we can just spell it out? I appreciate it.
Okay, and also the, of which I believe the applicant has agreed to, there will be no outside vehicles being stored there, or car storage, only those associated with the businesses that are being conducted at that point. And as Mr. Lewandowski had mentioned, the issue with trees and the replacement of those trees, plus the requirements.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have John as the second.
Okay. Mr. Jerry?
Yes, for preliminary and final.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Mr. Soltes?
Yes.
Mr. Pezy? Oh, he's abstained. Mr. Sandelsky?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
This application is approved for preliminary and final.
Thank you very much for entertaining us, too.
Okay, on our agenda, finals, there are none. We're on to miscellaneous. Don't think we have a study of land use regulation. I don't think there's anything scheduled for tonight. Any comments from the public? Oh, okay, please come forward.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. I know there was an applicant tonight for 815 Wood Avenue that was withdrawn, but I asked the board if we could possibly, in the future, be stringent on allowing applications of those sorts, where we're knocking down one building and putting up multiple buildings. It is an added to the township, and on Wood Avenue, for a lot size to only be 65 feet wide, would really be changing the look of that particular road. And I think at this point, we're overcrowded, as you all hear on a regular basis, and it would be nice if we could kind of curtail that type of change in the land uses and be more stringent on allowing any of that to take place in the future. I was hoping that one item before this land use miscellaneous rules is actually why I came, to see if any discussion was going to be made regarding the rules for land use, but I guess since there's no changes, I don't know what they are, so I don't know what the changes are.
Are you talking about master plan, or you're talking about the...
No, if you look at your agenda, and I...
That's our planning board rules, how the planning board functions?
Right, I thought maybe there would be discussion on anything that might change this year, considering what's going on in the township with the overcrowding, if anything would be considered and discussed as far as being a little more stringent on allowing things like that to happen. I was glad to see that the person withdrew, but I'm just going to have to keep watching to make sure they don't come back next month.
Madam Chair, those are internal rules, correct?
Correct. Those are the rules for, our functioning of the board, not the land use rules.
Oh, I thought that's what it said.
And the board has to, Ms. Conway, through the chair, the board has to follow what's called the municipal land use law, and that's a law that's put out by the state. And each case, everyone has an opportunity to be heard by this board, and then it's up to the board to decide how it was going to be, it will be voted on, whether they're requesting variances or not. So that's why we have, we can't prejudice ourselves before the case is heard. I think our attorney will, will, you know, will coincide with what I'm saying there. We can't talk about cases before they've even happened. Anyone has a right to be heard before this board, and then the board will decide accordingly, based on the rules, the evidence that's presented, whether it's good or bad. And one of the things we do look at is the character of the neighborhood. Those are one of the things that you brought up, and how many conforming and non-conforming lots there are in the neighborhood.
Correct.
And if there are no non-conforming lots, that would be something that would be weighed in.
We don't want to start that.
Well, right. And I think this board has been pretty consistent with that. So, you know, we do have rules that we have to follow that are by the state. They're not made up by us, and I think, Mr. Bignell, I think you'll, you'll also agree that those are the rules we have to follow on this board.
Yeah, and just so you understand too, the, the land use ordinance allows for an applicant to seek a variation from the local zoning, but they have to put the proper proofs on the record, and they have to have the testimony, and the board has to make a decision. So...
Oh, it's fine if they ask, but...
Well, they would have asked tonight, and then the board would have had to decide whether that was a variance situation they wanted to grant or not. And theoretically, because I can't talk about that case, if you looked at our report, it said that the applicant should provide testimony showing properties that have similar lot widths or sizes in the neighborhood within 500 feet, because that's the development pattern in the area. And I don't think the applicant could have accomplished that, to be honest with you. All right, but those are the things that we, we put out. I, I suggest if you find this interesting to come to all these meetings, because they are, everything's different, and it's always, it's always a challenge for the board.
I will try. Thank you.
And Ms. Conway, what we also normally get, and we ask for, are tax maps within certain radius of the property, and, you know, how many non-conforming lots, how many conforming lots are in that area. So all that's taken into consideration by this board before we make a determination. So I don't know who's telling you something otherwise, but that's what this board has always done.
No, no one's telling me anything. I just saw what I saw, and I wanted to bring it to light.
No, no, that's, that's good that you saw that.
To let you know that I'm asking you to consider this.
We can't, remember, we can't make decisions and prejudice cases before they come before us.
Just due diligence, that's all I ask.
And I just want to clarify, I, I thought you were referring on page one of our agenda where it says adoption of the planning board rules.
No.
I understand now. You were looking at study of land use regulations. Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the public?
I think a motion to close the public session.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I think if there's no other comments, I...
Motion to close the public meeting?
Second.
Okay, needing a adjournment?